Do it.
Nobody can't do it.
We're all spirits. Heavenly Father, I would like to thank you for this occasion today. We ask that you allow the board of supervisors to meet and make the best decisions that we possibly made for our constituents. We ask that you bless us, allow us to arrive here safely. And after the meeting, we ask that you allow us to make a back home statement. These things we pray in his name.
Amen. Thank you, Ken.
I thank the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The last report is extremely accurate, but the record is this meeting is a recess meeting from December the second. And I'll always put into a special call meeting for one item. Because it's a recess meeting, the board is not limited to an item. With a notice, it can take action on any matter that seems appropriate.
Okay.
There are other matters I think the board probably don't take up to a need to do.
Let the record reflect that this is a recess from December the second.
That's correct. I went back and checked the tape to make sure.
That's what it was. Good deal. Thank you.
It doesn't want to be limited to the note.
To the notice itself, we can discuss other issues. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the addendum to this meeting. You'll have copies of it.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. On one, order spreading more than minutes, notice of special meeting. Tim, you want to, this is appropriate to as necessary now that it was a recess meeting. I don't know if that's necessary.
Since they did the notice, I would go ahead.
Just go ahead, spread it on the minutes.
And note for the record that this will be recess meeting from December the second, therefore, the board has authority to consider other matters other than what's in the notice. I promise it.
So, we will entertain a motion, spread upon the minutes, notice of special meeting in the first condition district on Wednesday, December the uh 11th, 2024, as well as this is a recess meeting from December the second. Do you hear motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Those opposed by no, motion carries. That's covered the agenda. Uh, excuse me, the addendum. Order accepting the local purchase from Showtime Jumps LLC for reconstruction of two arenas at the Harrison County Fairgrounds in the amount of seventy-four thousand dollars payable from zero zero one five to two nine oh two as recommended by the fairgrounds director.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Let the record reflect this, the lowest, excuse me, the lowest quote. All, uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving a letter of support to MDA for the establishment of South Mississippi Defense and Military Affairs Council.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving contract for the sale and purchase of real property bought in between Harrison County and the Biloxi schools for property located on Divide Road and authorizing execution thereof.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Those opposed by no, motion carries. Uh, all right. Next item on the agenda is recognize Mr. Jonathan Scruggs, urban planner, discussed on the audience. Mr. Scruggs.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Kind of cold out there today.
A little chilly.
Good to be here, that's for sure. Um, I was asked to come back to the board to, uh, kind of give you a rehash and take one more look and take combined look. I know you have some members of the planning commission here present today, as well as a couple developers or individuals who, uh, you know, work with developers here in Harrison County. So, um, I, I guess my approach is, of course, to go through this. Uh, I believe we can have a kind of fluid conversation with the board and if y'all want to entertain conversations and comments from the public as we go forward, we can do it all as it flies around. So, I think it should be a pretty informal type of arrangement. Uh, I really have not updated or done a lot of information, uh, changes to this. Uh, I'm kind of comfortable with where we are. Uh, what needs to happen is, of course, get the county comfortable with where we are. Uh, I believe it's going to be your document. It's going to be, uh, your cross the bear, so it's going to be up to you guys to be comfortable with the changes or, uh, maintain your status quo, uh, whatever you decide. Of course, that's what y'all get paid the big bucks for. So, I'm going to leave it up to you, but try my best to, uh, you know, give you the guidance, recommendations, if that's the necessary. Um, you know, the, uh, this is where we are today, Dennis. I've got the, uh, the A1, H, D1, and R1 highlighted. That, that's your base district. So, of course, my whole thing from the beginning has been to advise you that, uh, creating more districts is going to be more advantageous to you. I, I think this is a, a good way to go and it's pretty consistent with what, uh, other cities have across the, and counties have throughout Mississippi and the nation. Uh, I think one of your biggest issues is the, uh, A1 district. Uh, it has a size of fifteen acres, which is, uh, not a lot of people in Harrison County have, or the majority of people in Harrison County who are on A1 do not have fifteen acres. So, a breakdown to provide more options, of course, is what I think is suggested. The same thing with the E districts. Uh, I think this is a very underutilized district because it should allow larger lot sizes. And I think we should break this down to, uh, at least four that include, you know, basically three-quarter acre lots up to a three-acre lots with ones and twos in the middle. And the, uh, R, the R district, I think, is what's going to be your, uh, one of the road mix array. This is the one that I think is going to raise most eyebrows and have the most, uh, um, conversations. But, uh, I believe that currently your ordinance is not very, uh, direct in what the minimum lot sizes are. It's all based on conditional uses. This, uh, would, would work toward getting rid of the conditional uses and establish some actual, you know, zone sizes when you adopt a zoning district. Uh, these are the recommendations that I have. I think they're a good mix. We can scratch through any one of them. I, I know some comments I've heard is that we shouldn't have anything less than ten thousand square feet. Some say we shouldn't have anything less than twelve or fifteen thousand square feet. I believe having, uh, more arrows is definitely more beneficial. Just because you have a seventy-five hundred square foot minimum lot size district does not mean you have to put those in areas where they don't fit. So, I, I think that having more options is better for the county and it's better for, uh, the developers. Uh, you've got a lot of R2 and R4 zoning districts, but just because you have them does not mean individuals can walk in and automatically get that on request. It should be based on the surrounding area when you make your decision. Um, let's see. This is a rundown of the district setbacks, um, and the density. As we've talked in the past, Mr. Lander, it all comes down to density. You know, we can call it additional usage, we can call it what we want to, but when individuals and citizens protest, it's typically because of the number of units that are, um, being proposed. Half-acre lots, two-acre lots.
The bottom line, yeah.
And, and I think this does that because it, it does establish the density when you choose a district. Uh, one thing that I've had some conversations with, uh, I've talked with Jackie in the engineering department. I've also talked with some guys on the development side. Uh, the development type that we have right now. If you do a lot that's under, what is it, uh, anything less than a hundred feet width or if it's a subdivision under, I think it's a R1 subdivision, you're required to do curb and gutter, you know. Uh, there are examples to where, uh, curb and gutter and open ditches may be more acceptable. That really should not be something that is written in a rulebook that, um, has no bearing to the topography or the property or the development style, uh, has no bearing on the wetlands or what's around it. You can sometimes get a much more, uh, conservation-friendly or environmental-friendly development with some, with some open ditches. But this should be based very much on the design of the project and not just somebody checking a box to say, if I do a certain lot width, I can get open ditches or have to curb and gutter. Curb and gutter is a much more costly, but it drives up cost of housing, which means that to get, uh, pay for that, he's got to have more density, you know. So, by requiring all the bells and whistles, you know, the lot's going to go down. You say you don't want suburban-style development in a, in certain portions of the county, but when you do curb and gutter, you're basically mandating suburban-style development. So, I think this should be, you know, a handle between engineers, uh, your county engineer and the developer engineer. But that's all decided after the zoning comes into play, you know. The zoning gets to given and then they can decide how they want to develop it. There really is no one side fits all and I believe that, you know, sometimes it's better to let the guys who went to school for it figure it out and not me and not, not the zoning ordinance. Uh, when we, one of the reasons I like the approach that I proposed for the, uh, the breakdown of zoning, you know, can be kind of demonstrated when you look at your existing zoning map. Right now, you've got a, I'm gonna call it a hot pot of zoning districts, you know, some that are single parcel. Some subdivisions have numerous lots within them that are zoned one thing and, uh, and other lots that are zoned something else. That's not typical, you know. Most of the time, you have a subdivision has a single zoning district. Um, and you don't go in and just, you know, pick small pieces of property to zon them because somebody wants to put a manufacturer's home on the property or they want to do an accessory dwelling, or they want to build a house. I mean, uh, currently, I believe, if you have an R, a A1 lot that's less than fifteen acres, you've got to basically rezon it to come in and build a house on it. At least that's the way, uh, Mr. Bob handled it when, when he was here. So, you had a lot of rezonings, not because there's been a change in their character or because there's a need for it. You've got to rezon them because somebody wants to build a house on it. So, uh, I, I believe by, you know, adopting some standards that are, are better, uh, more, you know, various districts, you're not putting a C2 or a R2 in an area where it's not necessary because all that does is provide precedent for future zone changes. Um, I believe this, this map right here, as I've kind of colored, it shows you some of the ways you could look at surrounding properties and establish zoning districts, you know, based on the area. Uh, I think this is a, 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 you know, as a planning approach to it that, you know, says it basically lots should be compatible with what's around them. I, I, I like this area because, you know, and I went back, it was kind of by accident, but I pulled it up today and looked at it. Look at the Gulfport Cities Limit side, you know. On one side of that line, imaginary line that you can't see on the street when you're riding down the road, you see a sign of maybe, but one side is allowed to have fifteen thousand square foot lots inside the city. And on the other side of that line, you've got to have fifteen acres. You know, that really is not patterned. You know, I mean, there should be, in areas like this, a transition that's natural. You should go from a, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, minimum fifteen thousand square feet lot on one side, and on the other side, uh, it should be fifteen, or it could be twenty, or it could even be, you know, something in a, in a E district that's E one thirty-two. But to have one side of the line being fifteen thousand and one side being fifteen acres is, it really is not, uh, not transitional. I believe that what this actually can do is provide, you know, some direction for, um, some mass rezoning in the future by the county. Not today. We want to maintain the voluntary approach of this. But I think these districts will allow you to go in and do some, uh, you call it preemptive, you can call it just establish a comprehensive rezoning. If you do some comprehensive rezoning, then you're kind of in control of where growth has to go. You can look at this area and say, look, there's areas inside of here that we want to encourage growth to happen. Right now, it's developer-driven. Right now, every property basically has to be rezoned. And who gets to decide that? Y'all, y'all decide it when it comes to you, but in that sense, you're reacting. Versus if you came in and said, hey, we're going to look at this area or some other area and establish these districts, then you're telling developers and anybody else, this is where we want to have residential development happen and not somewhere, you know, way north of, uh, you know, way north of the county where, where it should not be occurring.
Well, that, that's, that to me is the, is the difficulty that we have with our particular zoning. Harrison County is kind of a, a unique situation as far as zoning is concerned because it's, it's semi-ruled and rural. And when you're talking about this transition, you know, in a city, it's more combined. You can have it easily. But it's harder to make that transition in a rural area. What I'm saying is your, your example of having one small, uh, zone lot or whatever and across the street, or fifteen acreage, that, that's going to happen in Harrison County. That, that's what we, that's what we have, if I understand what you're saying. The, the transition, if I'm trying, I'm trying to make it clear, the transition that we go through in the county is, is going to be a little more difficult because you have such large properties.
Dominic, I think what he's trying to say, and I was going to ask the same question, is, I mean, you can go down one street and on the same side of the road, you have, let's take, what's, what's the name of the road? Sam's that runs out to Canal?
Yeah.
I mean, you'll have a fifteen acre tract of land and next door, not across the street, but next door is a subdivision. Then it'll be a two acre tract of land. So, how do you go in? I mean, do you rezon those people's properties that have a fifteen acre tract of land? And, and so they have their fifteen acre tract, but in the future, if they ever sold, whoever bought that property can do whatever they wanted with it.
Right. But the bottom line is what, what, kind of referring to what he has, is what I'm concerned about, okay? If this board makes decisions to change the zoning, you don't have the community input as much as you do when you, we do the conditional, uh, conditional permits. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
And what I want us to be careful not to go in, change the zoning maps. And the average person out there might not be paying attention to it because all we're doing is changing a map.
Yes, sir.
All we're doing is adopting a map. At some point, based on what we adopt on that map, there's going to be actual physical things occurring like subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
And, and I want to make sure that when those subdivisions move in or when, when that occurs, that these individuals and citizens in that area have a right to protest and to either the commissioner or to the board, that they object to that.
Right.
If we, if we assign a map, a particular by right, just do the map, by right, a, uh, uh, a density subdivision can move then on to that particular property. But we're just changing the map right now. We're not, we're not actually making a proposal or a proposal is not being made. You catch those people off guard. They're not going to be as interested as when you say, we adopt a new zoning map.
I understand.
All right. But if we adopt a new zoning map and all of a sudden, there's a right existing, for example, the density that we're talking about, if we create a density right in there and somebody comes in and says, by right, I'm fixing to put in a, a, a high-density subdivision. And those people sitting out there say, when did that happen? When did they get a right to do it? Well, we changed the zoning map. You follow what I'm saying? All of a sudden.
Yeah, Marlon, I don't mean to interrupt, but I totally agree with you. This is about giving more public awareness, right? This is about protecting, um, agricultural areas. So, I absolutely agree with you on that for sure. Um, and I need to board a plane, so I need to get off the call. But Claudia Keys, my commissioner is there. We've spoken many, many hours about my intentions and she has ridden out there many, many times. So, I'd love for her to be able to speak on my behalf if y'all don't mind, but I need to get off the phone now.
We'll give everybody a chance, the chair to come.
Thank you.
For that. But you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, let me, let me.
I agree with you, yes.
I, I'm, I'm very cautious about, uh, uh, changing, uh, the zoning maps because absolutely, listen, I think all of us as citizens, we don't pay attention to too much unless we know it's going to affect us. At that point, that's when we, we become attentive of what's happening. And so, be, all I'm asking the board to do is to pay close attention if we're changing the zoning maps, what we're changing that zoning map to and the rights that it's creating in that particular zone. Because that's where we have trouble.
Let me, uh, as a, as a luck, I threw at you my first.
And I don't mean to interrupt you. I just want to make sure that in, in this process, this change, uh, that we do, that we don't eliminate or circumvent the citizen's right to, to oppose or to appear before their commission or to this board to object to anything.
First of all, the approach we've taken on this, or I, I've take, I proposed on this, is that, uh, there is no mass rezoning of the county. You know, uh, what I've said from the beginning is that we're going to let this kind of be fluid and voluntary and, uh, kind of like it is right now, that the base on districts do not change. If you have a R1, if you have an E1, if you have an A1, your zoning district and your uses do not change. At present, the only time they change is when a developer comes in or any citizen comes in and wants to rezon their property. Now, I will tell you from experience in Gulfport, Ocean Springs, Pascagoula, uh, Jackson County, you name it. I've done it. I've been there. And a zone change is just as, uh, there's as many pitchboards coming out as a, as a zone change meeting as there is a conditional use meeting. So, don't discount the knowledge of your citizens and know that if an R1 fifteen is placed next door to them, they're going to call Eric and he's going to tell them, oh, yeah, it's going to be a subdivision. I mean, and the pitchboards will come out regardless of the conditional uses associated with it or not. A mass rezoning, a, 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 a city, a county-wide rezoning can slip under, you know, the radar for a number of citizens that don't disagree with what you're saying there. And that's why from the beginning, I said, what we want to do on this is a, you know, a piece by piece voluntary rezoning that gets you something that's more, you know, uh, that when you do the rezoning, people know what they're going to have, they're going to be able to do on their property. But it does preempt the need to go in and have a complete set of plans for a property that nobody knows what you guys are going to approve. Right now, an R1 can be anything from a six thousand square foot lot to a ten thousand square foot lot to a subdivision full of half-acre lots.
So, just for clarity, what, what your recommendation is right now is not to go in and rezon the whole county, but just to create specific zoning, zoning for like R1, R2, R, R one point, one point one five. And depending on the specific situation, what they would request would be what falls in one of these categories.
Correct. Right now, if somebody comes in today and asks for a rezoning, they ask for R1. And on, on base, y'all have almost no clue what that means. I don't know what it means.
It can mean a, a lot.
It's going to be something. It's going to be a, 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 a six thousand, ten thousand, three acre, two acre lot. I mean, it can be anything. Once you zone, you know, into these districts that I'm proposing, a one, an R1 twenty, it's going to be minimum half-acre lot sizes. You know that. You know, that, that you can't go to ten thousand. You're going to be twenty thousand or greater. The same thing with the R1 fifteen. It establishes what those minimum zoning areas are going to be. And you can look at it and say, there's not another fifteen thousand square foot lot within a half a mile of you. You know, that, that's inappropriate. These should be half-acre or one-acre lots. Right now, you can't give a one-acre lot zoning without the R1. And, and that should be an E1. That should be, you know, that, a one-acre lot's a good thing. But the only way to build a one-acre lot requires a rezoning to an R1, which also allows a ten thousand square foot lot.
He's just creating more options for the individual who wants to change the zoning on it, uh, uh, more options.
Right. But, but, but Mr. Barrett, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. I'm not. Right. I don't think this county is ready to go in and do a comprehensive rezoning.
The county's unique. You brought up Ocean Springs, Pascagoula, Gulfport, Biloxi, and Jackson County. Jackson County is unique because over fifty percent of their population lives in the unincorporated area. And Harrison County, county, less than thirty percent of our population lives in an unincorporated area. About seventy-seven percent lives in the municipality. So, that's easy because the municipalities outside of, you know, the north part of them, some of them that have been annexed, is very dense already. And so, having a district is very easy. But in Harrison County, you know, you have thirty-three or twenty, twenty-seven percent approximately of the people that live in the unincorporated area. And you know how big that is. So, the, the, the why, just the, the, the difference, just going from one property to the next on the same street is just like night and day. I mean, you may have a trailer park and then a five-hundred-thousand-dollar subdivision within a hundred yards of it.
Right.
And, and so, it's just, in my opinion, it's going to be very difficult to do. And now, over time, it might be able to, with us implementing specific zones, it might be something that naturally just takes, you know, takes place and we're able to do it down the road. But right now, I don't, you know, I agree with you. I don't, I know you're not asking that, but I don't, I don't think. I think it's something that would be very, very difficult for the county to do at this point.
I mean, the numbers you threw out, you know, percentage-wise are, are correct. Uh, you know, just this last census data, you know, the county unincorporated area of Jackson County, you know, passed that municipality.
I think it's fifty-two, forty-eight, something like that.
Yeah, it's, uh, that's, not a lot of people know that, so I actually don't.
I run political campaigns, so.
So, I mean, I'm like, wow, that, that's good information. Um, but you compare the size of Harrison County and the size of Jackson County, you'll probably find that the number of people living in unincorporated Jackson County is about equivalent to what's living in unincorporated Harris County. And if you look at the building permits you're issuing, y'all are blowing Harrison, uh, Jackson County out of the water. I think, I'm trying to get this properly out. But Jackson County does about four hundred units a year. And I imagine you guys are doing six to seven, if not eight hundred units a year in, in the county.
One of the reasons is because our municipalities are running out of places to build. And so, developers have no place to go but outside.
Well, and that's the same thing in, in Jackson County.
And then some of our cities are so difficult to build in. That's, that's another reason.
Here we go, the Ocean Springs Planning Commission.
Dominic, really, that's a fair question.
Yes.
What you're really doing is changing zoning. You're taking the three definitions we have and creating subcategories that are specific under that one. That's how, that's how you're avoiding a zoning change. The R1 now will become R1 with the designated subdefinitions. So, when somebody comes into development, instead of having a, every time a subdivision comes in, you got a ten percent of the lot, you will know that they'll be coming in for R one point two zero. You'll know those are twenty thousand square foot.
Well, I, I believe if we, if we, if we tried to say, we'll go get rid of the R1 districts completely and, and reassign a new district to it, then you would have to go in and do a comprehensive rezoning in the south part of it. What we're doing, what we're avoiding that is we're allowing all those domain chains that exist in this district. And the only way to change right now, under this proposal, is if it's, you know, if an application is submitted by a developer or a landlord. You know, now, I will say this. Uh, if we did, in, in, in Pascagoula, we wanted to rezon a certain corridor and we did a comprehensive zoning, a, a, a city zoning of that small area. So, I believe that if the county wanted to say, let's just say this area, you want to take this area and say, we're going to do a comprehensive rezoning of this area, you can. And then you would have a much more focused conversation with the area, with the residents in that area as opposed to doing a county-wide rezoning. Because, you know, county, the people up, you know, in north, you know, Harrison County really don't care what's going on on Land and Road. But if you say, we're going to develop, you know, modify the zoning of the Land and Road corridor, then you would have people come out and attend that, especially if you did, you know, flyers and, and social media type of, you know, campaign. I, I do think there's a way to take small bites at the elephant instead of just, uh, you know, doing it throughout the entire county.
I got a question. So, if we do this, will this eliminate conditional use altogether? Okay. The reason I ask that is, let's just say you go up off of Highway 67 somewhere way north, up Eastham County, everything is large tracts of land. And you want to build, somebody, let's just say we have another hurricane and everybody wants to build. And so, the first guy that goes out there to build a subdivision, if we do away with conditional use, that's spot zoning, isn't it? So, if you went in and you changed something right in the middle of a bunch of agricultural to R1, let's say, or R1.20, or 1.75 even, need a bunch of houses on 50 acres. Can you go and rezone an R.1.75 in the middle of agricultural without that being spot zoning?
Well, you can't do it to R1 either without it being spot zoning in that case. I mean, so.
Isn't, isn't, isn't spot zoning illegal?
Well, spot zoning is not legal. But ask Mr. Holland to define spot zoning. Is, you know, spot zoning is defined as a small, a small tract of land.
I just.
That's incompatible with adjacent districts. So, you can judge on the incompatibility, meaning that if you've got R115 adjacent to a bunch of 15 acre lots, you can very easily say that's not compatible. Regardless of what I asked for, whether it's two acre, three acre, two acre, you know, five acre lots, you could, as a body, say, this is not compatible with the agriculture area. And that, that's, that's a body.
But what I'm saying, even if we pass that, even if we pass that, that would be passing something that was spot zoning. And I don't know what the ramifications could be, but...
Spot zoning is a broad term, but you can find it particularly, but I'm not sure that if you went in to change the zoning on an agricultural 15 acres within that, but that by itself would be spot zoning. It still has to meet the criteria.
Yeah.
That it's compatible with the neighborhood, or makes that finding, you know, kind of hate to say it, but kind of depends on if anybody's tested it, whether it, whether everyone becomes a problem.
So, I will say this.
So, if we leave the conditional use option in place, the four situations, do we need to, I guess I'm asking, do we need to leave that in place for those type of situations?
See, I don't think, I don't think so. Because, you know, right now, the conditional use process just allows you to more or less see, you know, what, what the 6,000, 10,000 square foot lot looks like on the street. I mean, when, when they come in and say, I'm giving you, you're given an R1 zoning. See, to me, that is, it's just, right now, I can, you can have an R1 zoning in your existing code with one acre lots. A developer can come in and say, I want a R1 zoning, just like my neighbor has. But I want to build 6,000 square foot lots. And you go, no, no, you can't do that. Why not? It's an extension of an existing district. To me, that kills you. Because to me, if you have an R1 here and I want to extend that district, regardless of what size of lots are, that is precedent, that's an extension of an existing district, and you're supposed to only be looking at that for a criteria of zoning change. You know, that's what you're supposed to look at. Is it consistent with the neighborhood? Has there been a change in neighborhood care? Is there public need? So, if I have an R1 and I want to extend that R1, y'all can't do anything but say, y'all should not be doing anything to say yes. But if I have that, it's not an R1, it's an R120, the only way you can extend that is to have another R120. I think it's going to tighten up what individuals are able to ask for, because it's going to, you know, you're gonna know it when you, when they come to you and ask for it. And you're gonna know what's out there already. I mean, you, you can make a zoning change based on what is surrounding it. I mean, that's what this whole map back here shows. You know, um, you've got, you've got R1 up in this area that's a two acre lot. You've got a R1 in this area that's 7,800 square feet, same district, but very, very different lot sizes. What, what I would do is have, all of these would be different districts that would have, you know, different lot sizes prescribed. That means that if in here, yes, I could come in and get on our, you know, 7,500 or 13,000 square foot lot size in this area pretty easily because of what's surrounding it. But, I want to point to the wrong property here. But, um, in other areas, it may be more difficult to make that justification because all the lots are larger than one acre. But, you know, they're all R1. So, by doing this, you're, you're really getting rid of the need for conditional use because you're answering the question at the application, what is going to be the lot sizes, you know, that's permitted in this district? Well, it's gonna be one of these. And it doesn't matter how it looks.
I understand, I understand the process, all of that. I 100% understand everything you're saying. The process that is gonna be different for someone to come in and the opportunity for the developer and/or someone that's against the development, through your process here, how does, how is that gonna work in the day and the life of your process?
Well, okay, let's, let's go through your existing process right now. Right now, you submit an application for a rezoning conditional, conditional use permit. It comes to the planning commission, it comes to you guys, y'all get basically one crack at it.
Okay. And at that point, that's when the notices go out so that people can?
That's when, that's when the protesters or the proponents come out.
That's right.
And, and it's decided there.
And that's where it happens.
And you guys, and, and then it basically goes to build and you don't see it until it's actually constructed.
Okay. So, basically, they have one, one opportunity.
Right.
One opportunity, the, the, there's one opportunity to come in and oppose or agree with whatever it is.
And, and the bad part about that is that once it's zoned R1, if the wheels fall off and it, and it does not happen, then you, and the conditional use expires in six months, then you've got an R1 piece of property out there that really is, I don't want to say unregulated, but it's got a whole bunch of different uses that could go in it, you know, from 6,000 square foot to, you know, to one acre lot size. So, you're establishing a zoning district with no real idea of what's going to ultimately happen there if the proposed development falls apart. But still, you get one crack at it.
Okay.
Under this process, the developer comes in and asks for a rezoning, does not have to have any drawings, because all he's asking for is a rezoning. And it's based on, you know, those districts we talked about. Public hearing.
Okay. So, at that point, that's, that's one, one opportunity for them to oppose.
Correct.
Okay.
Then it gets approved. Now, instead of drawing a conceptual plan, the developer knows what the lot sizes are. So, he's able to do a more definitive plan and go back to sketch plan. And that requires a public hearing before the planning commission. Same notice, same process.
That's two opportunities for them to come in and continue opposing.
Right, right.
So, we have two opportunities.
At that opposition, it should be more based on traffic or drainage or some other consideration, because we've already talked about density. We don't want to talk about density at this meeting, but we can't talk about the ramifications of the, what's going to happen to the infrastructure. And then, as I have proposed, even at, then they, so that now they are able to go do construction drawings. They're actually decide, you know, what size pots are needed, where the tension's going, all this stuff. It comes back to preliminary plat for another hearing before the planning commission. Now, this one's kind of up in the air. It can be a public hearing with notices to all the neighborhood, or it can be more or less an administrative type review that comes to the planning commission and the board for, for approval.
So, but there's an opportunity. That could be the third time that someone could come in and.
That's correct. That's correct. So, it can be watched at every phase of development versus where you have it right now at just one. So, I think you've got, I believe you and the citizens both have more control and more ability to ask the correct questions in this process.
So, is that the last opportunity?
Yeah, preliminary plat means you approve it for construction.
That's the third opportunity to oppose it. After that, there's, it's pretty much, if you're moving forward, it's dead.
Right, right. And developer, the next, next thing you know, it comes to you for final plat and approval. And at that time, the streets are all around and, and it just is ready to be reported.
How, how can you make a decision on that first step that you're talking about when you come in for the zoning change? Comes in and he's asking for, uh, someone, the property owner is asking for a zoning change. And you say, what are you planning, why? Why are you requesting this zoning change? The board or the commission asks why? If there's no plans, if they don't know what they intend to do on that property, you're saying there's no plans.
I mean, I mean.
How do we have, how does the commission or the board of supervisors have enough information if they don't have to know exactly what they're gonna do with that property requesting that zoning change?
If I'm asking for an R1.75.
Yeah.
I'm building a 7,500 square foot subdivision.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's it. I mean, and if somebody asks you for R115, they're asking to build a subdivision of 15,000 square foot lot size.
What would, what would be the differences with the process that we have now? They're coming in, they're asking for a, a subdivision, 75, uh, whatever square feet. Uh, like, what's the difference? Why have, why have all these different levels to deal with when you can make that decision to start with on, on the way we're doing it now?
But you don't. Because, I mean, somebody comes in here and goes, I want to do 7,500 square foot lots. Whether it's the planning commission or whether it's here, y'all go, oh, heck, no, we're not gonna approve that. And you either deny, you probably just deny at the planning commission. So, what does the developer do? Can we just make it 8,500? No, come back with a new plan. The developer has to draw a new plan.
Yeah.
Spend more money, come back with, you know, a bunch of ink waste and trade waste. Come back and say, what about this? I want the same zoning. Zoning does not change. I'm just modifying the conditional use.
So, I'm assuming the first, the first process is you're establishing the density. You don't, you don't see what's being built, but you understand that the homes are only going on X amount of square.
Correct. You said it here from your statement.
Density is all you're, all you're haggling over in face of one.
Density is key. Density's what we're.
So, I think, I'm not positive in some of the builders that are here to verify this. I think in the city of Biloxi, whenever you come in for a zoning change, you sort of have your sketch plat in place most of the time. Is that correct? No? So, you just come in for a zoning change and I've just seen, I've seen it before where they've done that.
They do a general, Gulfport does a general plat. A general plat, you come in for a general plat, you go out for it in this.
I don't remember ever approving on the council that, that third gray box you have on this right side, like a, a sketch, I'm sorry, the, the one right above it that forwarded board supervisors for approval and hearing. I don't remember ever approving a sketch plat on the council. Now, I know that the planning commission did. I think that that's something that goes before the planning commission and then the actual plat comes before the, the council. I just, this is, to me, to me, I agree. It's a lot of steps.
Biloxi didn't have, doesn't have a sketch plat process.
Okay.
They do a, they do a preliminary plat.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think, I agree. I think this is a lot of steps. I mean, even as we are now, if we eliminated that sketch plat process, I mean, that's putting that in front of the planning commission what?
Three to four times? Uh, potentially three times. Now, I, here's my opinion on the sketch plat. And this is, you know, just made from being someone on the developer, on the developer's side of it. Sometimes it's advantageous because if you skip sketch plat, you're straight to construction details. Then, you know, you're putting a lot of money into drawing up plans, you know, to the nth degree, ready for drawing and come in and present that to the, to the city or county for consideration. The sketch plat at least, it almost gives you that conditional use type look. You look at it, go, yeah, generally, we approve this. Cities and counties both can allow you to combine sketch plat and condition, and preliminary plat at one time if you want to do that, to eliminate that step.
Okay. So, I don't disagree with you there. I just don't know why that has to come before the board of supervisors.
I think, I think sketch plat to me, or that step is more important than the preliminary plat to me. Sketch plat is where you, you're almost doing that conditional use type look to where you're, you're looking at the parcs, you're looking at the access, you're looking at the ingress and degress of the subdivision, looking at the tension, looking at all those things. That should be handled by some public body. Somebody should know what's being approved. Once that's approved, you can allow preliminary plat to go, you know, straight to, to Jackie if you want to. I mean, that's the way it's done right now. I mean, you do conceptual, you do conditional use and then it goes straight to Jackie.
I mean, if it gets to a certain point and it's approved, the people, I, I just think that if you have three opportunities for people, and I'm not trying to take the opportunities away from the public, but once this gets to a certain point, it's gonna go through as long as they do what you're saying, asking them to do. And so, anyone opposed to it would basically be wasting their time coming to that many, that many hearings or whatever to oppose it.
I agree.
Let me ask you ten more questions legally. Once we, the public doesn't have a sketch plat, even a sketch plat, they come and the developer is asking for a specific zoning that will allow 7,500 square feet, high density development. We don't have a sketch plat, we don't have anything. We approved that. Now, we've approved a zoning map change. Now, once we approve that zoning map range, that developer has by right to develop that within those confines of square footage allowed.
By that definition, yes.
By that definition. Once we approve that zoning map, Katy bar the door legally. People can come in here and raise all kinds of double L about what's being put on that property. And we might say, we agree with you, but we, we, we not gonna approve it. We not gonna approve the sketch plat. When it gets in the court, the, the advantage is to the developer and not to the people who are opposed, because we've already approved a zone on our map, a zoning that allows that type of development. All we're gonna get into then is, do you, are, and I've been a little facetious, do you paint the houses red or do you paint them blue? Do you have parking on the outside, on the inside? We're getting into the detail. But he, the developer has a right now, based on the fact that that initial approval that we gave without knowing what's going in there, that by right now, that density is approved. And if we change that, we get the sketch, a sketch plat, if I understand it correctly. And we look at that and we don't particularly care about that particular thing. The only thing we're talking about now is not the density anymore. We're talking about exactly what, how you're gonna build the houses and whatever, other things. By right, he, that developer has the right to put that density in that subdivision. And that's what people object to. It's the density, not necessarily whether the roads are wide or narrow or whatever else. I'm simply saying legally, and I'm asking you, once on that first step, we approve that zoning change to that particular density, the burden then is for the, the people who are opposed to it to come up with something. But, but they're at the disadvantage legally, because we approved that. The only thing we're gonna be arguing about is how that density is gonna be put in there. Some conditions of the homes, I don't know. But, but unless we can come up with a good argument not to approve that sketch plat, they got it.
Well, let me ask you this.
So, I, I, that is my issue with this. I'm gonna let, go ahead.
If, if that 7,500, you know, lot size is so inappropriate, why don't y'all approve it? I mean, but that's what you're asking. If it's not appropriate, why don't y'all approve it?
If you don't have the information.
You're, you're gonna have the information. You're gonna do a, you're gonna do a zoning change.
You're telling me that we don't get the sketch plat until after that approved?
I mean, I, I, don't, don't.
You don't get the proposal. We don't know what the proposal is until after we approve that particular density.
I have a question. Eric, in the city of Biloxi, I've been to a lot of these planning commission meetings. And more times than not, when the developer comes in for a zoning change, they have some kind of conceptual design. And whenever they're required, they don't just come in and say, we want a zoning change.
Yeah.
They say, this is what we're gonna build and this is the idea of what we're gonna do. It's, maybe it's not a sketch plat, but some kind of conceptual design is on that piece of paper.
I don't think any developer, even if we didn't require it, any developer coming in to go for rezoning, either under the new or the old, just for rezoning, they're gonna have.
They have an idea of what they're going to do when they come.
They're gonna, they're gonna. They're gonna, they're gonna.
We can make, I mean, we can make, if that's a concern, we can make that a requirement that they have a conceptual design.
All right, but let me ask you this. If I have a conceptual design for a fifteen thousand square foot development and the neighbors look at my design and don't like it, can you tell me what they don't like about it? Is it because I have too many cul-de-sacs? Is it because my streets aren't wide enough? Is it because my parks aren't big enough? If, if I show them a plan and they're upset about my plan, it's not about the layout of the plan, it's about the density. So, so that's what the question is, Mr. Ladner. It's, it's density, it's not the way it looks on a piece of paper. And I will tell you that I have gone through and I've asked for rezonings in every city and every county on the Gulf Coast. And if I'm asking for R seventy-five in an area that it's not fit, they come out with pitchfork.
Why go through all those steps? That you're, you're describing? Because what basically we're doing now, the, the applicant comes in, he wants to change a zone. Or at least under the conditional use permit, on the condition, under, he's asking for a conditional use permit on that particular. He's not asking for a zoning change. He's asking for a, a conditional use permit that will allow him to put that density in that zone.
I will tell you why.
So why go through all these other steps?
I will tell you why.
Yes.
Property usually sells at the rezoning. A developer will, will say, you know, sometimes there's wetlands involved, you know, but a developer can, will say, if I can get this property rezoned, I will buy from you. So the contract ends there. Right now, the, the contract does not end until they get the conditional use permit. So it's a much longer process and you're tying the property up a whole lot longer and, and the developer's putting a lot more money into the process that really is skipping him down the, almost a year.
With all, with all due respect, maybe we're looking at it from a different perspective. You're looking at it from a developer's perspective, making it more efficient for the developer or cheaper for the developer. I'm looking at it from the perspective of that person, those people living out there that's fixing to have their lives upended. Are there change of conditions out there? Are there quality of life out there? I'm looking at it from their perspective. So I'm not necessarily looking at it from a developer's perspective. With all due respect.
But Mr. Barrett just told me that the process is too long this way. So I, I mean, I, I, I don't think I'm doing it for the developer. I'm doing it.
When you're talking about the property values and all that kind of stuff, you, you just mentioned the developer's cost and all those things. And I can appreciate that, don't misunderstand me. But that's not my primary concern, what it's gonna cost to the developer in the, uh, due to the however the process is established. My concern is making sure that the citizens out there who, who lives are gonna be affected, their quality of life, their investments into, in properties out there in, in rural or, uh, area. If I go out and I make an investment about ten acres and I want to build a house on my ten acres and the next thing I know, they're fixing to put in high density subdivisions around me, that's affecting my quality of life. And, and I'm concerned about their right and concerned about their ability to have their voices heard to their elected officials.
And Mr. Ladner, I, I, I can't get beyond the fact that with these districts, they already rezoning at a public hearing meeting that are posted that every neighbor knows. And that is, and it may be a little different mindset change, but you, for you to just discount that this process in some way changes the public's ability to come in and protest is, is just, it's not what goes on in the other.
My concern is legally that i- if we're not fully informed of exactly what's going on there and we change a zoning, uh, map that allows seventy-five thousand square foot, whatever, high density. From that per, that point on, it becomes more difficult to deny that project.
I mean, you.
I asked, Tim, are y'all lawyers? Does it put the burden now more on the citizens to, to, to come up with a justification in the, to the board of supervisors as well as to the court ultimately? Because the zoning change allows it. The zoning map allows it. Once you permit the zoning, you have, you have more of a difficulty to stop a project. It's in there by right now.
I think what they're not getting that they will get eventually, initially, they're just gonna be asking, I got twenty acres here, I want to change to R one twenty. Whatever they have, the map going on. And so they're not, what the public's not gonna see is the subdivision design, that the actual plat at that point is gonna be, we're gonna change to seventy-five hundred, but the public will know that the density will be, in your example, seventy-five hundred square foot lot.
Once we change that map, once we change that zoning map, we're, we're almost creating, we are creating a right if they meet those conditions of that zoning map.
But I mean, that's, that's what zoning is, sir. Absolutely. That's what zoning is.
But what you're saying is, we don't see the sketch plaid until the second process. We're, they're coming in, they're asking for the zoning change. As, if I understand it correctly, correct me if I'm wrong. They're coming in and they're asking a piece of, a parcel of property to be rezoned.
To, right.
By right. You're creating in that particular, if we approve that, that developer or that property owner has a right to put in that density of a subdivision or homes or whatever, by right.
But that's what zoning is.
Absolutely.
But that's what, I mean, that's what I, I don't under, I don't.
Because before I make a decision, I would assume the, the zoning commission, I would hope the board of supervisors, before we make a decision as to whether we changing the zoning to give somebody by right to do something, that we know exactly what's going in there.
On your, on your, on your day in the life of, if you can pull it back up. Can you just move the sketch plaid application and forward to board supervisors? Can you just transpose those? And that would fix?
Well.
Because you would, you would have a public hearing and a sketch plaid, it wouldn't be an application, but you'd have a sketch plaid at that hearing. And that's, that would fix the.
Would it give you enough information?
At, at Dan. I think, I think me and Dan are the same.
Would it give you enough information, a sketch plaid?
And I've only built a couple of houses in my life. I've never built a subdivision, so I don't know from a builder's standpoint how difficult it is. But how difficult would it be to combine those first four boxes together and have the sketch plaid as part? I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's something that, that's doable or not to where, or your conceptual design. Conceptual design, sketch plaid, is that the same thing?
Tell me again what boxes you want to combine.
So, so basically, when they come in for a rezoning, require the sketch plaid to be a part of that, then that eliminates the, what he's told himself.
Okay, I, I don't disagree with that option. I believe that a developer should be able to come in and say, I want to do a rezoning and a sketch plaid at one time. That should be an option.
Then that way it protects the.
But.
Not knowing what's going on.
Not knowing what's gonna go on to the property.
But I also know that it's kind of, what if I come in and go, I've got my sketch plaid and I want to do a R seventy-five hundred? And you guys go, well, no, I mean, you can still do this. I want to give you the R, you know, fifteen thousand, R one fifteen thousand. So the sketch plaid then is void. And the, can I go forward?
As a board supervisor, we want that option.
I'm sorry?
As a board supervisor, they, they want that option. It's not, it's not, it's not that burden of the cost and all, I mean, you shouldn't be on the board of supervisors to make a decision on something that we don't know what it looks like. And all Mr. Martin's asking, is we want an idea of what's going on with the property before the rezoning.
Right. And here's.
And I think, I'm gonna be honest, I think most builders do that anyway. I've, I've sat through a lot of these hearings in Biloxi. And, and I think that this is something that they do anyway.
Well, here.
And I think, and I think the planning commission may say, well, we want to do this, but change this or whatever. And then when they come in for their final plat, that's where they make those changes. I just don't understand why it would be an issue to, now, this is just me, I'm not a builder. I've never built a subdivision in my life and it may not be possible. But I don't understand why that when you submit your application to rezone, you could not submit a sketch plaid or a conceptual design as well so that, so that the public and Mr. Ladner and whoever else on the board wanted to know what was going on that piece of property or an idea of what was going on that property. And that way, if it, they come out with their, their plat and it's something grossly different, they're like, hold on a second, this isn't what you showed me the first time around. And then you have the opportunity to make a different decision.
I, I, I don't know that, I mean, it's definitely possible. I mean, it's definitely possible, it's definitely doable. What, what I don't like about the current process is that I come in with the same rezoning application three times. I want to be R one and I want to do, uh, eight thousand square foot lot. Y'all turn down the rezoning and conditional use permit. I come in next time, I've got the same rezoning application for rezone, but I'm doing ten thousand square foot. They said, ah, still, we want to deny your rezoning because it's up and it changed neighborhood character, blah, 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 blah. Then I come in, so I'm doing a R one with fifteen thousand square foot. So now you're gonna approve the R one rezoning, which is the same rezoning application that's been submitted three times now. But you're only really concerned about the conditional use permit of, the conditional use side of it. So even through that process, even with the different images, you're still talking about density. To me, I mean, I, I believe that if a developer wants to come forward with a sketch plaid at a rezoning hearing, they can. But Mr. Hallman can tell you that you, you've got developers all the time that show up for a rezoning, showing you they're gonna, they're gonna build one thing and then they do a bank switch and do something else. So I think.
That's the point that I'm trying to make.
We have some builders here.
Once you change, you see, he brings in, once that zoning is changed, once that initial zoning is changed to allow certain square footage or density. Yes, according to what you're saying, later he comes, then we got, based on what you're proposing here, the developer brings in his sketch plaid. I'm not familiar with those things. I don't know how much detail is involved in anything. But now, the developer can be this way. I've got the zoning by right. I've got the zoning by right. I'm happy to talk to these, uh, these people out here. I will negotiate, but I'm telling you, I'm not changing this and, and that's it. And if the board of supervisors says, we're not gonna approve the sketch plaid and all that, then when we wind up in court and, and if I were judge by right, that developer has the right to put that in there. The burden then is on the people, the objectors, not the developer.
Yeah, but the, the burden is always on, on the county. And if y'all approve, if y'all approve for the, for, because there's no protest, because you didn't do your homework or somebody told you something else, if you approve a zoning for seventy-five hundred square foot lot, then, and, and that's not what you want to go there, then, yeah, y'all have told somebody they can do something and they moved forward with something you told them they could do.
I don't know if, I would approve, I don't have enough information.
It comes to a public hearing.
I don't have enough information.
It comes to you guys for approval and then you tell that guy, you can build seventy-five hundred square foot lot.
You're telling me they don't have to even submit a sketch, uh, uh, plat, uh, plat until after we approve the zone? I don't have enough information to make that decision. I don't think any, anybody, any public official should be making the decision because once we make that decision, once we approve that zoning map change.
All right, so.
That's, that's where I have a problem. Then people come in, they object to it, they, they, even the people are, are gonna ask.
Okay. But let, let's, let's, let's do this.
I, I mean, we get.
Yeah, here we go.
Well, no, I was just saying, does anyone else that wants to?
Yeah, I think we need to get into it.
Let me do this. And let me just, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go back to where we are. What we'll do, if y'all, I, I still think the districts are necessary. If you guys don't want to give up conditional use permits, then we can allow that to be part of it. And somebody can ask for R one fifteen and they can get the, and they can get that at one time. But I mean, I, I still think the issue with that is that if they ask for R, R one fifteen and they provide you those drawings, then it's, to me, it's, it's a lot easier for y'all to say, let's go with R one twenty. Y'all have a lot more ability to move things around when you're simply talking about zoning. When you make somebody come in and ask for two applications at one time, and you know it's not two applications, it's only one application. But if y'all want to do that, guys, y'all in the box. I, I, we won't change the conditional use.
I don't think conditional use is necessary if you include the, the conceptual or, um, sketch plaid application.
Actually, you're not calling it that, but that's what you're really doing.
I mean, I mean, if you want a drawing.
You're actually giving it a conditional use.
If you, if you want a drawing associated with an application, I mean, people ask for that. Can you give me a proposed like, call it a proposed layout? You know, that, that's, that can be in there. But if it's binding, then it's a, it's not just conceptual, it's a, it's binding. I mean, I, I'll let anybody else in here talk, uh, we can come back and finish up.
I know.
I was just gonna ask a question. Right now, a conditional use permit is granted, it's got six months of extension extended. If they don't do something within six months.
Subdivision, they actually, if they're making progress going through the end, it can go as long as two and a half.
Right. But there's a time limit on it. And I haven't looked at this legally, but how come they're, to address Marla's concern, the developer comes in, this is only addressed to one aspect of it, the developer comes in and wants R one fifteen. They apply for it, it's given to them. There could be a similar time limit that if they don't pursue it, the developer, somebody, I don't know, whether it needs to be years or what, that that doesn't actually go back to the original.
But Tim, what I'm saying is, and my concern is that once we get the zoning change, and of course, the sketch plaid or whatever, the plan or whatever we're talking about, uh, the developer then comes in with that and we have a hearing on that. Developer is not, and really legally, I mean, I guess in good faith they will, but they're not obligated to negotiate anything with the public because they have by right now to put that in there.
Well, they will have by right.
Look, I mean, you know, guys, I mean, y'all really are giving this by right a lot of, you know, uh, consideration. I mean, you know, I, I've come in with applications that are logical, that are no brainers, that, and this is in, in various counties, you know, I mean, in various cities, that there's absolutely no way I can get shot down and I've been shot down. So I mean, just because you have something by right, I've had subdivisions turned down by right, by right.
By right to go.
And what you do, you turn them down and say, you know, take your corner.
I got an idea that they're not gonna win that case.
The only thing, the only thing that would be written by right is the lot size only. How the thing is designed would still require further hearing and approval if they don't get the approval. Then, you know, they, they make sue law, they law or appeal.
Then how do you write in the ordinance, Tim, that there's certain conditions? Do you write in the ordinance that the developer, once he gets by right, there's all these other conditions that he has to meet within the development?
I think there are other conditions he has to make to get to the end.
Yes.
I think that one of the questions is to put a time limit on it so that it doesn't, you know, earn the benefit of somebody. He gets a rezoning down in five years and they'll sell it to somebody else and they say they got the right, but that all expires in some form.
It requires the county to come back to actually redo it. I mean, the Gulfport has a one-year timeframe, but they've got to actually redo it. I mean, you can't just, you can't expire because, and then there is a question of, you know, if you rezoned it, it's based on changing neighborhood character. Y'all would have to identify the same change in neighborhood character rezoning back, but y'all can't, you can't do that.
You have to look at that, but, I mean, I think there's a way to address the permanency of it. I see what you're trying to do. You're trying to make it easier for the developer to go to a piece of property and say, twenty thousand square foot lots without going through the whole process of designing the whole subdivision and be told, no.
Y'all can open up the phone for a little while. I'll, I'll be happy to come on. Y'all can keep somebody else.
You drink some water.
Jackie, I'll take some water and a cigarette.
I think I worked my money. Let's not talk about bills, all right?
What I, what I want to suggest is that the, uh, the, the sketch plaid or concept plan, by definition, what you require to have in that, if our ordinance requires an approval of a sketch plaid and that sketch plaid has to contain certain components like the exact location and size of roads, um, traffic configurations, drainage considerations, and you cannot approve a subdivision until that sketch plaid is approved. Those are the elements that are appropriate at that time.
But we need that before we approve the zoning map change. We need all that information before that because once we change it, I'm telling you, we're gonna have a problem.
The thing is, is that you don't get that now. You get a conditional use. You get a conditional use, which is a concept map, and if we include a concept map with zoning, that doesn't include exact information, and then a sketch plan that requires that exact stuff, then, for instance, like with Walker Farms, where we had issues with where those access points were going to be, that then gets negotiated at a sketch plan, which is a legal requirement to get approved for a subdivision. So it gives the public the opportunity to argue those details, after we agree whether it should be quarter acre, full acre, or two acre lots. So that's kind of how that can be incorporated.
I know, I know exactly what's happening.
So Jackie, just for clarification, what you're saying is, I come in and I apply to, to rezone a piece of property, 1.5, or 1.50, or whatever it is, on here, and at the time of that request, I, I, um, I submit a conceptual design. It doesn't have the specifics as far as all that, but basically, this is, you know, this is a picture of, of what our plan is, with this size homes, this size lots, blah, blah, blah. Once that's approved, then the next step would be the, an actual sketch plan that has all that, as, as far as the size of the roads, the drainage, trees, all that kind of stuff. But, but we, we could require a conceptual design to approve the zoning.
I think that's up to you. I think, the thing that I like about having this next step is that when they do right now with a conditional use, they have that concept plan, and some are more specific than others, but what it does right now is at the sketch platform, when you're setting those things specifically, that falls on my department to interpret the conditional use, rather than bringing it back to the public and to the boards to say, this is not what we agreed to, you have to change that, and then I can go ahead and enforce that.
Yeah, and a conceptual design is really going to have all that, because you've got to take a piece of property and say, okay, this much road fits, and this, this much property is going to have most of that detail in it.
And some do that, and some do it as a, as a pencil drawing, and have never surveyed where the wetlands or the low-lying areas are, and, and, so that there's some significant changes sometimes. And, and I would prefer that those changes come back before the boards to make sure that the public gets a chance to look at them.
So basically, you recommend doing what's on this piece of paper, but add a conceptual design to the initial process.
I think that there's some tweaking that can happen, and I think no matter what, I think no matter what step forward we make right now, I think that we're going to find some things that we want to tweak moving forward, but I really like the opportunity of having density being one meeting, and layout being another subject, and not trying to argue density based on-
Density on one meeting and the layout on another is not going on.
Well, and they can be done at the same time, in two different arguments, I guess, not arguing density because of wetlands, it's, you know, the lot size-
Yeah, I, I don't-
They should be separate arguments, where you can actually solve each problem, I guess.
Yeah, I'm going to, Mr. Jones?
Um, I'll just go inside. Oh, sure, Kenneth Jones, 919 Second Street, Gulfport, 39501. First thing I'm going to say is, the main issue we have as developers that are bringing stuff in front of you guys, is what you're going to want. I think that's where Donovan tried to come up with the process, you're concerned with too. At the end of the day, what I don't know is what you guys have a vision for of Harrison County. This map right here is a great example of that. If you look at it right here, Mr. Lander, I know you already got your mind made up, but if you can, just open, open it for just a second.
No, sir, I'm, I'm listening.
Here, there's all these variations of lot sizes, okay? So if I'm a developer, and I want to develop this piece, right here, that's zone A1, right now, my only option is to do 15 acre lots, which is incorrect, I don't even understand that. But what, what should this be reserved? And how are we going to decide that? It's, y'all should plan, and then at least, I'm not saying mass rezoning, right, but have a plan of what developers, residents, that have comments and everything else, want to see in that area. And that way, when I'm looking for a piece of property, I have a general idea, because to Donovan's point right now, this is zoned R1, this is zoned R1, this is zoned R1, there's all this, there's C2 right here, and everything else, so I can make an argument that it should be zoned R1. Debate comes in as what the level of density is, but I have no idea right now, because there's no guidance from you guys as a board to say what you believe should be there. Does that make sense? I mean, so, we're going into this and saying, how do we, how do we determine that? And your biggest concern, I understand, is that you're going to lose control of that. I think, one thing, and I'm hearing two different arguments, really, but they're kind of the same thing, for me, it's that this decision, if we go with Donovan's way, can be appealed three times, which gives the residents way more say in it, but at the same time, some of those, the things that they should have a say in, should be eliminated by each meeting. So, this is what Donovan's proposing, he's saying, come in there, and I want to rezon this to R115, which is 15,000 square foot lots, which, if I'm looking at this, you've got R175, R113, R175, that's probably a pretty realistic zoning expectation with that piece of property. So, to Donovan's point, you can bet that I'm going to have, all my lots are going to be above 15,000 square feet. And you said earlier, the only thing that people care about, the thing that people care about the most, right, is the density. How many lots are going to be there, right? And how, how big are they going to be? What's the minimum lot size that's going to be? That's really what they care about the most. So Donovan's proposing to go in here, and I'm going to say, I want to build R115 lots. And, so, those people are going to come, they're going to come with a pitchforks, just like they do already, and they're going to say, we don't want 15,000 square foot lots. And y'all could say, well, we actually think it's appropriate, because there's R175 lots there, there's E1, you know, there's R113, there's R175 all around it, and we actually do think that that's appropriate for the area. And so, that's established at that point, is the density. And then Jackie made a good point, like, and not saying that you shouldn't require a general, you know, layout kind of design, I think that's probably a good idea too, and personally, as a developer, I don't have a problem with that, that's how I'm going to face numbers and stuff like that. But Jackie's saying, we do things a little differently, we usually have a topo survey, we have our wetlands delineation done before we get to this step of like, currently meeting with y'all. She's saying, now require that for the sketch plans, because some developers don't do that, they don't have their full wetlands done, they don't have a full topo, they're using county contours and stuff like that. So she's saying, require all those things, have another meeting, and where the public gets comment, but that is going to have more specifics about drainage, it's going to have more specifics about where parks are going to be located, because you're going to have a full survey, you're going to have all this stuff, they're going to spend a lot more money after they know that they can actually do a density. So the public gets comments, say, we hate R115, we're okay with half acre lots, but we don't want 10,000 square foot lots, or 15,000 square foot lots, we don't have half acre lots. Then as the developer, they're going to go out and get a topo survey, they're going to get wetlands delineation, cultural resource survey, all this other crap, and then they're going to come back to you and say, now we have an actual, we tweaked this layout from the very first thing that we turned in to you guys at rezoning, and this is exactly where everything's going to be. And this is how the drainage is going to be, then the public doesn't get a comment anymore about the density, because that was already heard, right? Y'all, if you don't agree with it, you determined at that time, and you don't vote to rezone the property to the R115. But then this hearing, they get a chance to come back, they get a chance to say, we don't, we think that there ought to be more parks, we don't, hey, my house is right over there, and they got this pond over there, and all this flooding is going to come on my area back there, right? And that's where that stuff gets worked out, and then the preliminary plot, in my opinion, all that other stuff is kind of worked out, and then the preliminary plot could either be administrative or something like that, because that's going to be the time where you're being with fire department, I mean, with Jackie, and engineering, you're getting all those kind of other details that are specific to your department heads worked out, you know? And that's what happens right now, with conditional use, goes straight to bottom plot, right? Because all those details get worked out. Um, I'll take any comments on that, because I've got a couple other things, but I want to, if you have any questions on what I just said.
The only thing that I would say, Ken's been on this board a long time, and, and the others too, as well, have already been through, uh, some zoning appeals that have come to us. And in all fairness to the developer, the most frustrating thing that I have had to deal with as a board of supervisors, in, in those appeals, is that, like Mr. Donovan said, uh, and I agree, bottom line, when it comes to it, bottom line is density. If I live on, as I indicated, my 10 acres or 15 acres, and somebody wants to come and surround me with two houses per acre, I'm going to have an objection to that. It, 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 my quality of life and my investment in everything is adversely affected, and I, I have a problem with that. But, uh, the, the appeals we get down, and, and, and people are desperate, they are desperate when they come in and, and, and they see this change fixing to occur to them, they're looking for everything they can to oppose it. As far as I'm concerned, all they have to do is come in and prove that that development's going to change the conditions that they live, that's under the ordinance, if, if I'm not mistaken. Just tell me that, and, and I think that's enough, but what happens is, unfortunately, we get into this, uh, wetlands problems, we get into the drainage, we get into the schools are going to be overloaded, which is not an argument, we get into, what else? The roads are too narrow or too wide, we get into all these things, drainage, which pulls you in, the developer in, and having to say, okay, yes, we're wide, and, and all those kinds of things, and when you agree to all of that, which is going to cost you money, bottom line is, they still, it hasn't affected the density. So my point, I, I, the point that I'm trying to make is that, if we kept it purely from the, what the zoning says in reference to, if you're going to build a subdivision, does that subdivision change the conditions of that area? And if it does, then I think it's incumbent upon the commission, and ultimately on the board of supervisors, to say, no, it, it, you don't need the ordinance.
And my biggest issue is not, what, so, you're, we're trying the same thing, I don't care if you adopt the new thing or keep it as is, to be completely honest with you, my problem as a developer, looking to develop in Harrison County, as y'all stated, there's not a lot of land left inside the cities, that is not 100% wetlands, that, you know, can be developed, and so, people are going to develop in the county, whether they like it or not, right? So have a plan. Guide developers, guide people of what you think needs to go where, because when I'm looking at, had a rezoning that was in off Kilda Lil Road, along Kilda Lil, those half acre lots, and we're like, no, it got voted down.
But there were larger lots that-
There were, those were even half acre lots, but it got voted down.
There were large lots surrounding that area that would adversely affect them.
I'm not saying, it's still your decision whether you should, you agree that it should or shouldn't happen, right? I'm saying, guide developers, if you would have said, there is no way in the, and we don't believe that any lots less than an acre in this area should be approved, okay? That, in that area, that we, I went for that one rezoning, we don't believe that any lots less than an acre should be approved. So, put out a community plan that says, we believe that this is going to be, this, this area should be a state rural E1.1, does that make sense? So if I, I don't waste my time, getting property under contract, doing layouts, doing surveys, doing all this stuff, to come up for you to say, no, I, I don't like the half acre lots, it's not a-
Kenny, you're talking about comprehensive rezoning.
I'm talking about, no, 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 I'm talking about a comprehensive plan, that recommends, that recommends-
Ultimately, comprehensive, John's changing.
I, I, well, yes, that's, it's going to guide, right now you have a, an area where development is incurred, right? E2 is development, where's development's incurred.
I'm not saying you're not a native, I'm just saying you're talking about comprehensive rezoning.
I'm not, well, I'm not trying to advocate for comprehensive rezoning, I'm trying to advocate for a comprehensive plan that, that spells out what we think, and it should go based on one or two, or y'all know that's where, that's where it's going to go first, so start in specific areas, maybe this area is the one that's the hotspot right now, and say, we think that this area is conducive to R115 lots. And that way, nobody comes to you with an R175 district request. Or they do, and they get denied, right? But I mean, I'm wasting my time, you're wasting your time, the public's wasting their time, to come up here and, and everything else just for it to get denied.
I'll give you a little history of zoning, and maybe that's what, where my perspective comes from, because I was on the board when, when it was initiated, and we were lucky we all weren't hung, okay? When you, when you start talking about zoning in a, in a rural county, in an area out of the urban area, that was a very difficult thing, the board of supervisors at the time did want to implement a zoning, and have some control over, over the development. And we had three public meetings, we had one in, uh, Civic Center in Long Beach, one at the, on 49, uh, and then one in DeIverville. And the, the info, the information, or the, the public basically said, listen, we will accept zoning, you see the zoning map, we had them posted, we're going to accept that zoning, because they all knew what, where they lived, and they all saw what was, they were zoned at. And the, and they told the board of supervisors during those public hearings, we accept this zoning, but don't you start changing it every time somebody comes in and wants to change it.
That's what's happening now, because the A1 districts are all 15,000 square foot, or 15 acre minimums, so every time I have it, I, I, I want to develop any property, I've got to come in for a rezoning unless I want 15 acre lots.
And they said, their information was, we accept this zoning, we see the maps, okay, but they didn't want us to accept zoning, and then the next thing you know, people were going to have all this change, the board of supervisors was going to change the zoning, so all kinds of things could happen to them. They were wanting to make it more difficult to change, not that it wouldn't change, but more difficult to change. Because we're talking about people's lives out there, y'all, and I appreciate developers, and I appreciate that we have to have places to live and all that. But, we don't, you know, they, people have a right out there to object, I'm telling you, every one of you, I don't know where you live, but I'm telling you that if you have your place in your life, and you see something coming in adjacent to you or surrounding you, that you don't like, you're going to be the first one sitting out here raising, you know why, the board of supervisors changed it at the commission approved.
And regardless, if you go with Donovan's plan, or keeping it as is, they're going to come out and raise holy hell either way, so I can guar, I can guarantee you that, if you go with Donovan's plan, they're not even going to come once, they're going to come potentially three times.
Yeah, but, but there's a, you know, if, how many times have we sat in an appeal, and people stood in the audience and said, I didn't get noticed?
Now they got three chances to not get noticed.
I didn't get noticed, my point is, unfortunately, I don't want it to make it easier to bypass their voice, I want it to make it a little more difficult to bypass their voice.
Mr. Flag, uh, one observation from a legal standpoint, this is the proposed plan that you were looking at, you, you're going to have, the public's going to have much more opportunity to protest in that proposed process than they do now.
Correct.
And the reason they're going to have it is because, you know, I realize, so, if, the first thing is, I understand-
They better protest on that first one, because they're going to be at a disadvantage such to that.
But it can be built in to, to, I mean, let me finish, first off, we're going to have a public here, just, we're going to change it to R1.15. So you're going to have a public hearing on that rezoning, that comes to the board for approval and hearing. Not only are they going to have a hearing before the public, the commission, but they're going to have a hearing before the board, then that decision can be appealed to the circuit court. But if it goes to the next step, sketch plan, same thing, you have a public hearing with the commission, that comes to the board for approval and hearing, they have a right to appeal that to the circuit court. And it has different questions- And it has different questions under the preliminary plan, same thing. The final plan approval, that would be the same way. So there's almost five levels of appeal in that process now as opposed to what we're going through now. Now, the problem is, is I perceive what's being said is, if they approve the, for instance, seventy-five, you know, let's say fifteen thousand, one point one five, R one point one five. And that's approved, and the question is, okay, once that's approved, it's over with. And they, and they don't have an opportunity at that point to see what the plan is. Well, they do later, and, and I think it can be built in, Donovan, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see why it couldn't be, that if the preliminary sketch application is not approved or always processed, that either that, the, the original change, can you say, okay, you lose your, your change? In other words, it's fifteen thousand square foot wide, but you don't get final plan approved by the board through whatever procedure, then that R one point one five would be reversed.
I, I mean, Gulfport has a reverter clause. Some counties, some cities and counties do have reverter clauses. Uh, they're hard to enforce because it, like I said, the board actually has to physically require that the map amendment be reverted. It just can't, it doesn't just happen automatically.
No, but it could in the, in the process, at the end of the process that it's the board, that the, that the original approval is conditional upon meeting the other requirements later. And if they don't meet on that original, it would revert back to what it was. Now, obviously, you could have litigation about any of this, but it addresses that problem. But you have much more through this proposed process, much more opportunity to object and appeal as a citizen than you do the process. Because what's happening, I think, is what the problem is, is now, they have to have the whole thing done and spend all the money to get the subdivision virtually designed completely. And the issues are right, most of them, the public's concerned about density, the concern about the road width, the, you know, going, you know, getting out of the subdivision, the traffic creates on the joint roads. But I think you could address the question of, if the concern is, we, once we approve it, it's done deal. I think you could address that, where it's not a done deal. If we don't get the final approval, it will revert back to the original zoning, whatever.
You said they can address that after it's approved?
I think, once it's approved, it's subject to.
I can't bank on that. Oh, subject to approval.
Subject to the final.
That's different being approved.
Once it's approved, it's over with.
But, but they have to. The original approval, let's say it's, they approve fifteen thousand square, they applied for, and the question is, approve of the fifteen thousand square foot? And you approve it's subject to the final plan approval being approved. So that if they get to that point, I had to research it, that if they don't get the final plan approval or any of the steps in the process, that that original approval was subject contingent upon that, therefore it goes away. It goes, reversed back to the original zoning, whatever it was.
But wait a minute. You got a problem, a legal problem, guys.
I sent it out to research.
Once you make a, a decision, and there's been a change of circumstances, then that change has been made. Harry Hughes and I agree that the city, that reverter would not stand up in a, in a court challenge. Because once you, once you've made that decision, that decision's been made.
I, I think it would then be evidence in the future, if somebody else applied, that there was, the board has already adjudicated.
And there's a, there's a lot of problems in this zoning business.
It is, it is. So a comprehensive rezoning is gonna be a nightmare.
Amen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have to do that.
I'm not sure if Tricia's gonna be.
And I'm not saying that, I'm just saying guidance. But, uh, I'll go over, I know there, there's other people who want to talk, so I'm gonna talk a couple of things. So I, I know everybody would like higher density or lower density subdivisions. So incentivize what you wanna see, is I guess I'd say that. So like on the type two subdivisions that don't require curb and gutter and stuff, and Donovan mentioned this when we was talking earlier. I mean, I'm working on a subdivision now that I'd like to have twenty thousand square foot lots and ninety foot wide and kind of meet that R one point two zero. It makes not requiring curb and gutter on those actually makes me have greater incentive to go with larger lots. So it's one thing that you don't like to maintain, but I think as long as the lot's ninety foot wide and has twenty thousand square feet on it, that's gonna incentivize me to go for that density instead of making it eighty foot wide and cramming more in, because it's gonna cost me about the same ultimately.
Other than aesthetics, what, what is the benefit of curbing gutter? Other than the way it looks?
Mostly, I mean, when you have a higher density, it's getting the water into the drainage, you know, sooner. I mean, Andy said this before, but I mean, there's nothing more efficient than ditches, really. I mean, and as far as the capacity to carry water, ditching is one of the best. Yeah. Now, I mean, when you have a bunch of driveways, if you have a sixty foot lot and you got a twenty foot of a driveway with, you know, and everything else, I mean, it's almost impossible to ditch it, and then you have culverts that are going under every single driveway, and those can get stopped up and stuff like that. So I mean, that's, that's kind of the biggest thing. A lot of them end up requiring curb and gutters because those culverts are in the driveway. Can get, uh, clogged up. But, I mean, it's something that y'all are gonna have to replace. I mean, everything's got a lifespan, right? So sidewalks on both sides and rural areas, sidewalks on both sides of the road, plus curb, plus gutter, plus underground, y'all, I mean, it's got a lifespan. And every time y'all approve that and mandate that there's gotta be all that, it's gonna go back to where you're gonna have to collect taxes and then a fan for that twenty, thirty years from now, again, to replace all of it. So incentivize what you wanna see. I, I'd like to see at least the R one twenty not have curb and gutter required. I think one issue that I, I have with those new zoning things and Donovan, or somebody else can say this, or maybe address this concern for me, is when I go and you have these, now there, now there are no adjacent zoning districts that are gonna match any of the current ones. So it's not like I can be on this piece of property right here and say, well, there's R one here, and there's R one here, and there's R one all down here and everything, and I think I ought to be R one two. There's not gonna be an R one, if I'm going for R one fifteen here, there's not an R one fifteen. I can show you the lot sizes in the adjoining neighborhood or in the area, but maybe that's, that's the only way to be able to do that. But that would be my only concern, is there's no adjacent true zoning.
Well, I, there, there will not be adjacent true zoning districts, but I think, like in this example here, I, I've kind of looked at what the surrounding zoning is, and therefore, not the zoning, it's certainly lot sizes, and you make that determination that that would be appropriate. I thi, I think that's what you should base it on.
I mean, is that how y'all, if, if you go for that, like zoning districts, is that how y'all see that working? Is looking at other adjacent lot sizes? My worry is that it's gonna be because one neighbor, I mean, this will kind of happens now. It depends on who shows up and how many people show up, right? It's like, if there's no plan of like what you think ought to be in this area, and I'm gonna request something. It depends on how many people show up to the meeting and who, how, how they complain and everything else. And ultimately, that's gonna determine whether it gets approved or not. I mean, as opposed to, you, you said it earlier, if somebody comes to the meeting and says, this is gonna negatively affect my property, one person, negatively affect my life, quality of life, and you're gonna vote it down. But that's, we know that the county's gonna continue to get developed. There's always gonna be somebody that's gonna come and say, this is gonna negatively affect, I mean, they do it at every meeting, you know? So I just, I don't know, gotta have a plan against it.
And, and for me, would be also the need. I mean, if, if you're, if you're trying to develop in an area that has five hundred available homes, I don't see need. Just because you wanna develop, it doesn't mean that there's a need. So a need is also one thing that I look at the most. My first thing I'm gonna do is gonna look and see how many available homes in that area. And if I feel that there's plenty of options in that area, then I don't, I don't see a need, regardless of the density or whatever it is. The need has to be the personal need, and then, then I would go to the density and, and everything around it.
You're saying available homes or available lots or planned lots or what?
Whatever developers are out there doing, you know.
There's a big difference in planned lots and actually available to me.
No, when there's subdivisions that are being built, there's lots, there's a home that's already been started, that has a sold sign on it. There's wood sitting at this lot, there's an available lot at the end of that road, all of that comes, all of that. Because they're available to be built.
I, I, I do agree a hundred percent with that, with the need, because the biggest thing, though, is absorption rate, which I usually put in mind, is like how many houses are available for sale, right? In that geographic area, and how many were sold in the last twelve months? So that gives you absorption, you divide, there's a hundred and twenty that sold in the last year in this area, that's ten houses per month. Well, if there's only five available houses for sale in that area, then it's a big shortage, right? Because there's ten selling a month and there's only five available.
Yeah.
Huge shortage, that's what makes prices increase, right? Now, if there's fifty available and there's only a hundred that's sold in the last year, then there's a way over supply. But just because there's lots, other lots planned in that area for future, doesn't mean there's gonna be any less demand necessarily.
But it will change, it will change the aspect of that area regardless, because it's already, what you're saying is, if they've already got the approval to do it and they're just haven't done it yet, that would change the aspect of that. If there's an opportunity to change that, the nature of the area. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's an opportunity there for them to just start clearing and start building. So it would, ultimately, it does change that whole area for, for homes and zoning, period. Just because they didn't start building doesn't mean that they, whatever, that they can, that it's gonna, you know. But, but there's an opportunity where there's just too many houses in one area, where there's a, a bunch of available. I understand the math that you're talking about, but that also comes into play. I'm not saying that to you. I'm not saying that that's the only thing. I'm just saying that is part of the equation of all the others, the density. The location, the people who don't want it. I mean, there's a multitude of things that come into play, not just one in particular.
No, not just that.
But that is just one that I, I, I look at as well. That's all I'm saying, is that's one that I look at, is how much is out there and how much is the need?
And that's, that's the million dollar question, right? Is how much is the true need? Just because there's a hundred lots that are planned for future development, not, doesn't mean necessarily that they're all gonna get snatched up or they're all gonna sit on the market forever. So that's all, everybody's gonna use their head to determine, right?
I don't want you to rush, Ken.
I know, I'm, uh, uh, let's see.
Because I think we've got some others to talk about.
I will also say, the last thing is, I really, and I've talked to Donovan about this, the conservation subdivision is a huge deal with, with these zoning districts. So we have wetlands on the Mississippi Gulf Coast and major drainage ways and stuff like that that need to be preserved. And honestly, a road, a linear feat of road right now costs us about six hundred and fifty dollars a foot to develop with curb, gutter, water, sewer, road, okay? So an eighty foot lot, fifty thousand bucks to develop eighty foot road, right? Now, you can divide that, divide by two, but that's just the roadway, that's not the land and everything else. So if you make zoning too high, housing prices are gonna be too high for people to be able to afford it and everything else. Incentivize what you wanna see, incentivize by not requiring maybe curb and gutter, incentivize by setting aside wetlands and not encouraging developers to mitigate those and impact those by saving our drainage ways to allow, even when you have a R one fifteen, you know, those lots may be able to get a little bit shorter because you made a lot more open space and you preserved these drainage ways and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'll catch you later.
Virgil, well, that's been nineteen oh one, twenty-fourth Avenue, Gulfport, Mississippi. Let me address y'all in two different capacities. First, let me address you as the attorney for the Harrison County Planning Commission and Zoning Office. And also, let me address you as a rural resident of Harrison County, a very rural resident of Harrison County. I live on thirty acres of land. I'm located over Highway fifty-three, about a mile south of Faciows. And I cherish my quality of life that I live, because I do live on such a large piece of property. But I'm gonna try to be short. I, I like to just go on and say what I got on my mind. Let me say it this way. If we abandon the requirement of conditional use of subdivisions, we go over it. Let me tell you, we will regret it. So let me, let me, I could touch on this in a number of different points, but I've noticed y'all have specifically been very interested in people's right to protest. Well, protesting is one thing, but having some basis of that protest recognized in law is another thing. You take conditional use out of the equation, then the neighbors' protest don't really mean a whole lot. What are they gonna do? I'm gonna protest on the sketch plan or, or whatever. You, if you go protest, you gotta have some reason to protest, it's recognized by the law. You know, conditional use, I wish I could recite what it is, but it's basically compatibility. It's basically compatibility of what's in the best interest of Harrison County, Mississippi. And that's what, if we take that out, yes, it's somewhat subjective. And that gives y'all a lot more control over what happens in Harrison County, Mississippi. If y'all think for one minute that a developer cares about anything other than making money, then let me tell you, I got a bridge I'm gonna sell you up in Brooklyn. Oh, that's Jones. That's all the interesting dead. Oh, let me, let me, you know, I could really get into this. Let me tell you something, even with what we've got right now, some of these subdivisions, developments, just make me sick at my stomach. I wish you would all ride up Old Highway forty-nine, go up Highway fifty-three, pass the, uh, the little service station, go on up about two miles to this big subdivision up there. What's it, Biloxi River? What's that name of that big subdivision?
River Hills.
River Hills. River Hills. They have cut down every tree, they have taken every blade of the grass away. There's nothing out there but rolling sort of hills and streets and a couple of houses going up. It just makes me sick at my stomach to see here's a big area, we talked about several hundred acres, but just deluded into a subdivision. I, I would put more teeth in what we've got right now, rather than come on, you know, Donovan's my man, he's my dog too, man. But he's a planner, and they think different than we do, you know? He got some real goofy ideas about them.
Don't give him a whole time, we've given him enough.
Well, we need, we need more stringent regulations to protect the quality of life of Harrison County, Mississippi. And I'm talking about rural Harrison County, Mississippi. Now, you know, in our developments, we see in the larger subdivisions, we usually see mixed size lots. You do this thing, you ain't gonna see but one size lot, and that's gonna be the smallest lot they can possibly put in there. So I, I know somebody said, well, why don't we put some kind of conditional use aspect to what Donovan's proposing? Well, if we do that, we don't need to even make any changes. Quite frankly, we have some problems. There are some problems in our process right now. But it ain't broke enough that we need to fix it. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Virgil. If I may, I see some commissioners here, but do y'all have any comments you'd like to make, especially after Virgil? Virgil just, I think Virgil said it more eloquently than I could. My concern about changing the zoning before we had the plan. I think he did it more eloquently than I said I had a little problem getting my point across, but yes. Any, any commission that did not, yes, sir. We're gonna have to give some time on this.
Sure, I'll be quick. Andy Phelan, two five one five, Havering Road in Ocean Springs, Kenneth Jones, Parker.
Andy Phelan, two five one five, Havering Road in Ocean Springs, Kenneth Jones Parker. I just wanted to add a couple things. One, I agree with everything Kenneth said for the record. And two, I think Donovan's on a good track. Also, kinda approached this, I'm an engineer, I'm a developer, and then I'm also on the Ocean Springs Planning Commission, I have been for about ten years. We're redoing the comp plan now, we re-did the UDC, both my tenures, so I kinda have that approach too. I'm not saying ours is perfect, I'm not here to even tell you what ours is, but I'll speak to it if you want me to later. But I do think we need to just, we're here because y'all asked for this to happen, right? So, there was problems identified with the process right now, to Virgil's point, if you don't like River Hills, River Hills was approved on the old process. So, something, if, if, if y'all aren't liking what you're seeing, we gotta do something, right? I think we can all agree on that. I keep hearing like this plan and, and the comp plan and the rezoning, and I don't think Kenneth ever said, and I don't think Donovan either, was calling for natural rezoning, a legal rezoning of the entire county. But I do think that we need to, you need to focus on the teeth that that gives both you and developers. If you have a good comp plan, and y'all actually probably have one of the most, uh, complete comp plans, because y'all break it down into individual areas, right? And then you zoom in on those areas and you have words for that area, everything else. So, the comp plan should be used to say, here's the growth orders, right? Highway forty-nine is totally different than where Virgil Gillespie lives, right? We treat Highway forty-nine differently, right? So, put that in the comp plan, y'all have that identified in growth sectors, right? So, the growth sectors, one thing that we, Ocean Springs, is doing in the comp plan is we have a chart. And it says, hey, if we're G-two, these are most likely gonna be these different zones, right? It's not saying that it has to be those zones, but hey, these G-two, where it's bet and those could be... See, ours is divided into commercial and residential, yours is divided into density of development, development encouragement, basically, right? But where, so you identify where you want that. I keep hearing rural Harrison County, okay? Well, there is rural Harrison County, absolutely, but where is rural Harrison County? I think you use the comp plan to define where your rural Harrison County is, right? I think that adjacent, you know, we've had three projects that touch the Gulfport city limits. And I think Donovan pointed out, I mean, that's an imaginary line, nobody can see it when you're out there, right? So, there should be probably more density touching the city limits. And then if you're just in the middle of, you know, no man's land, there should absolutely not be a lot of density. So, I think we need to really kinda understand that the comp plan will give developers, we can use that, hey, look, this does, it's prime for development, it's great, we have a really good chance to get it rezoned. Or developers can look at it and say, hey, man, they're saying this is open space, we have almost no chance, we probably don't even wanna look to it. It also gives y'all that same teeth, right? We come in, we have a R-seven-point-five in the middle of your open space, and y'all look at your comp plan and say, nah, no way, but hell, that was right? Like, this is not in what we had planned. So, I think tightening up the comprehensive plan, I don't know if you go with what it is, I don't know if y'all review the comp plan, do an addendum to the future land use map. But I think being able to have the plan, that Kenneth is saying, that comp plan is there, you have the plan. Just gotta use it, maybe polish it up a little bit to make it to where it can be used. You know, as far as like developer dollars, I just, you know, our expenses get passed down to the future homeowners, future residents of Harrison County. So, you know, going back into some of the sidewalks and everything, I agree a hundred percent. I think Donovan's talked about that. I don't think, you know, the other things, a lot of people, you know, impervious area gets beat up a lot, right? Because it increases runoff, runoff increases this, now you got drainage problems. But then, you know, everybody agrees with that, but then most places say, but you still need curb and gutter on both sides of the road, right? So, there's two feet, four feet, need sidewalk on both sides of the road, five, ten, now you have fourteen feet of extra impervious area that you've added almost more than an entire traffic lane just with curb and gutter and sidewalk. So, I think that y'all are on the right track thinking about that. And then the only other question, Marlon, that I've, if we got the rezoning, and I'm okay with having a conceptual plan, but it needs to be defined what is binding in our conceptual plan. Because Kenneth's gonna do our layouts and he's gonna set everything right based on a horizontal view, right? He's a bird, he's looking down. I'm gonna start my design based on the vertical view, like, oh, man, you didn't account for this hill, we're not gonna be able to grade this down and have this lot here, I may lose a lot. Or I may say, hey, man, you thought this hill was there, we may gain a lot. So, I mean, how much, how much change from the rezoning application site plan can there be on the final approved, Jackie's office says, hey, these are good to go? I think that needs to be defined, is it, I don't know if that's a percentage, maybe it's ten percent of, of lots and all. So, think about, you know, and at some point, though, the developer should have a by right, right? So, it's up to you to decide where that is, I get that, I understand why you don't wanna rezone. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I do appreciate your side that you wanna see what's being rezoned and that's fine, but we just need to be able to say, like, the concept plan giving of rezoning is not final, it's not perfect, it's not ready to be built. So, we just need to know, like, how much change can we have from concept plan to, to finished site plan? That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
While we're waiting for the break, I did a little research. I think you could design a revert clause or contingency clause where the first approval of like fifteen thousand square foot lot would be contingent on the final approval of plat.
Then you're saying that, that it, they don't need to condit, it goes back to the original zone?
And I found a specific case that held, in other state, of course, not Mississippi, a specific case that held that you, you don't have to go back through the zoning process, which would be the fear.
It just reversed back to the original.
Just reversed back because you're not really changing anybody's right as of yet, because you're, the original zoning wasn't what it was. And so, I think you probably could figure out a way to address the question of the initial approval of fifteen thousand square foot lot is not final where you can address it later.
So, Josh Drummond, eleven five twenty, Rio Lato Lane. I've served on the...
Where?
Rio, Lexi, sorry. I've served on the Ocean Springs Planning Commission when I lived in Ocean Springs. And then I've got a background from the developer standpoint as well. One of the things that I wanted, basically what you were saying there is, if we have, if we come in with a concept plan and we find out, okay, y'all agree, we can have this size lots and we're with this plan. So, we go to start developing and we've got a hundred trees we gotta work around. So, then now we've got to come back in and modify that. Whereas if you were to do the density upfront, and then that change to the zoning does not change, like you said, until that recorded plat. And if that plat is not recorded based off of the plan that, that y'all approved, like I said, it would revert right back to it. And I agree with fifteen and twenty thousand square foot lots, and maybe they put a, put something in there that there's less variance if you do an upfront density plan. You know, every time a, a plan has to change from its initial, it's gotta be some sort of variance made to that. So, there was that. And West Harrison County currently, the inventory of houses is ten-point-five months. If no more houses are put on market, sold, built, anything, right now it's two and a half months of, of houses. We run out of houses in two and a half months. These larger developments, they're taking seven years. The developers only taking forty, fifty lots down and then they're not gonna do another forty or fifty till eighteen, twenty-four months. And that's, that's basically what I had, uh, for those couple of things.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning. I actually came to the courthouse for another reason and I found out y'all are meeting, so.
Just couldn't help yourself.
Couldn't help it. I said I would come and just sit in just to hear because I have a little bit of an interest in, in this as well.
I would think so, because we see you all the time.
I know you do. And I, I approached this from, maybe a little bit different in the sense that I've been a city attorney for a really long time and, and I'm seeing the zoning from that side, which means I represent the government like y'all do. And I watched it, you know, from a municipal standpoint. I've also, in my private practice, represented a lot of developers in a lot of subdivisions. So, one thing that I think it could be very helpful is when you come in and you're trying to figure out how to advise the developer, go after this or don't waste your time, it would really help to have a comprehensive plan that would say that, you know, in these parts of the county, where we don't have water and so we're centralized, we don't have enough roads or whatever, we're really not going to want to develop this into a bunch of even, maybe even one-acre lots. You know what I mean? It just is not suitable for that because it is truly, I mean, there, there are vast areas of, of West Harrison County I can make up right now that just are not suitable. But that doesn't stop a developer from trying to come in and convince you that they can make it happen with septic tanks and, and other kinds of things. I mean, there are ways, but you could basically put together a comprehensive plan that says, we think it's a good idea to put it in these areas where we have centralized water and sewer, we have, or it's close by that you could extend it to it, you know, you know, you could extend that water main, that sewer line, whatever. And I think that would really help in trying to guide people as to where you wanna see the development, where you don't. I, one thing I know about zoning and about development, both in our city and out in the county, just because I've been doing this for a good little time now, is that it is dynamic. And what I mean by that is it is ever-changing. You know, what happened back in two thousand and four when people were, you know, getting zoning for the first time in the county and they wanted to stay just like that, never change? One thing I'm sure about is we are gonna face change forever, forever, forever. So, and the only thing that you can do, or not the only thing you can do, but one thing you can do as government is you can help guide change, guide it. You can help manage it so that it won't have, you know, the really adverse effects upon the people's quality of life. Now, if people are just against it because, you know, they wanna have that five acres and that ten acres and that thirty acres and all that, I don't know that you can do much about that. That just is their mindset. And of course, they're entitled to that right to make that objection and they're entitled to come, you know, every time that they're allowed to, to come forward and make the objection. I mean, I agree with that. I've never once thought that people should be prohibited from coming in and talking about how it's gonna affect their lives. However, we get so tangled up as representatives of developers, and so does the county, and so does the planning offices, dealing with issues at the wrong time. We're talking about drainage before we got full drainage plan. We're talking about, you know, this, we're talking about schools, we're talking about all kinds of things. And they are passionate about it because somebody told them, you know, that they went to a hearing one time and they talked about it and they won. They, they were able to stop it. So, you, you know, and I'm not saying people are, you know, they just are trying anything they can think of, you know? I remember a judge one time told me that he was dealing with a divorce case and there were people coming in and some lady said her husband wouldn't give enough money to buy groceries. And the judge said, oh, that's terrible, he was kinda joking, and he said, I'm gonna give you a divorce. Every lady that came in after that said, same thing. Same thing. So, you know, they'll say it to y'all as well. And y'all have a hard job. You, you're supposed to be both managing the present, but you also have to be visionaries and think about where are we gonna be? And you know, you have, you've, you've made a huge mistake, and you don't realize this, but you've made a huge mistake as the governing authority of the county by making this one of the best places to come to and live. People are flocking here, they want to come here because they've heard about this great quality of life. And so, as a result, they're coming and they're still gonna come. And you know, and I think there are people that we wanna have in this community. But anyway, you need to go ahead and figure out a way. And I think using your, your existing water and sewer infrastructure plans to show where things are and where your roads are already developed will help guide you to do that. And just because you put it in a comprehensive plan does not mean that you have to go ahead and rezone. I wanna make that real clear. I know that Tim was talking about, you know, you're talking about rezoning. Not necessarily. You still have the ability to go ahead and say that for whatever reasons that are unique to that property, it still doesn't fit the criteria of change and the circumstances of the neighborhood and public need. If it doesn't fit those criteria, you still don't have to do it, even though you've gone ahead and said in a comprehensive plan that this might be a good area to do this. So, just kinda keep that in mind. And then I, I think that, I think everybody likes to, and Virgil and I spent a lot of time talking about this too, trying to figure out a way to create a better process. And I think that a lot of what Donovan has suggested could be a good, I don't wanna call it experiment, but a good way to potentially move forward to have less turmoil, you know, coming before you as board members. I really, you know, having represented the body for a long period of time, Mayor Board of Alderman, I, I really feel your pain and what, what you're having to do once you have that. But it's, it's all bottled up into one big massive ball, and it doesn't have to be that way. It could be broken up into sections, giving the citizens more opportunities to be more effective in their, their protest.
Did we get the cart before the horse in reference to placing a zoning change or proposal like this before we do a comprehensive plan?
I, you know...
We got the cart before the horse.
Maybe. You know, I, I'm not really spent a lot of time, you know, studying what Donovan has done, but I do know this, that, you know, you do need to figure out what areas... I mean, the mechanism is good, but where is it gonna be most effective? That's what you have to do.
And I think the comprehensive plan would kinda show that.
That should show that. It should show that.
And that's not it, Bob.
Yeah, it should show that. And then, you know, when a developer comes in to see me or, or see over here, Eric, I mean, all these different people, we can say, you know, since the county put the comprehensive plan in place, I don't really think it's gonna work for you to try to put it way up there north of Highway fifty-three, way over there close to Hancock County. I mean, it's just not gonna work because there's no infrastructure up there. No infrastructure. But if you have water and sewer, you have roads, you know, that's probably the areas you wanna see developed.
To look at, yeah.
Yeah. But he's right about one thing, Kenneth, for sure, right about many things. But one thing particularly is, is whatever you like, incentivize it, you know? Put in there, build in there that if you do these things, we will go ahead and give you greater density or whatever. There, there are tools for that. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, right quick, we, we do have time. All right, thank y'all. Thank you. I don't think we're gonna take any action today.
Oh, uh, she's lucky, the Chancy Clerk requested...
She wants, I, I think what she's gonna ask for, and I think the board will approve another meeting on the nineteenth, December the nineteenth, is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're gonna limit that somewhat, make...
Yeah.
Even though that's almost an impossibility for her.
Yeah, I think she mentioned something about paying claims.
Paying claims.
And then also personnel, you know, people being hired.
Yeah, yeah, that's kinda, yeah. That shouldn't...
I'll send a message, is that okay, to everybody?
Yeah, we, we need, go ahead and vote on the meeting.
Most.
That will be...
Well, just to recess.
Recess this meeting for the nineteenth of December. Thank y'all. Okay, thank you. I think we need, uh, if y'all want a break and, and come back and let's go into, you know, are you aware of a request on an executive session? Uh, Robin?
Yes, I just, we need to go into...
We need a plan.
We did need to...
You take this from me? So, Chair, Chair will understand.
I think they...
Okay, I'll go in. I'm sure I've got a bunch of...
Chair, you have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the need to go into executive session?
Hold on a second, ma'am.
Discussion? You're not all in, press is in, by eye? No vote by note, motion carries. We're gonna go into closed session, let y'all wait, please. We're gonna stay here.